Good evening, zoning board review is now in session. We'll take a roll call first. Mr. John Borden.
John Borden is here.
Mr. Ben Furell. Mr. Furell, you want to unmute your microphone?
Yes, sir, Ben Furell is here.
Thank you, Kathleen Poblakis.
I'm here.
Thank you, Sue Horowitz.
I'm here.
Thank you, Bill Wadika. And Oxy Bell. And Eric Raposa. Okay. And the chairman is here as well, James Knott. So, we do have a number of minutes, but they will be approved on the next meeting. Mr. Scholler is putting those together so we can go, I believe we have some back as far as January?
That was my error, I apologize, those were already.
Already approved, okay, so, Mr. Scholler, you're going to go ahead and cull through which ones have not been approved, correct? Correct. And we'll have those next meeting. All right. And that's all I have, so, for anyone in attendance that's listening in, the board does meet till 10:00 PM, only anything that is not heard tonight will be carried over to our regular meeting of October 15th, and we do have a number of items on the agenda tonight, so. First item on the agenda is a continuation of the Timothy and Emery Corbett seeking to various construct a pool without the required six-foot fence located at 156 Fisher Circle. I'm hearing this petition, it's Mr. Borden, Mr. Furell, Ms. Poblakis, Ms. Horowitz, and myself, so, is Mr. Spella?
I am.
Mr. Spella, how are you this evening?
I'm good, thanks, I don't see my face, but that's probably a good thing for you guys, but I don't know why I'm on without that.
Do you have your video thing checked, unchecked?
Not that I know of, but. Oh, there we go, somebody just prompted me to do that, there we go. I'm back.
Okay, Mr. Spella, since our last meeting, we've received some more information, I don't know if you want to review that with the board?
I would like to, thank you. So, if you, I could ask the moderator maybe to pull up the new drawing? So, my understanding, to try to recap last time, is that there certainly are concerns of the board over the height of a fence on a swimming pool. Remember that, as a very technical matter, I'm suggesting to the board that the state ordinance has changed, and when you have a hard cover that fits a certain criteria of the ASTME 146, there is no longer a requirement on a building code on a swimming pool with a hard cover. Despite that, we came in and instead of saying that we're trying to remove the requirements of a fence, we tried to say that what we drew was the equivalent of a a six-foot fence or the combination of guardrails and walls. Clearly, there were some people unhappy with that, and at the end of the meeting, there were suggestions made on what we could do. My client, we're frustrated, but understands the system basically rearranged because there is no way that the infinity pool concept can have anything more than just that wall. People were concerned with the wall, people were concerned with the moat. So, basically, on the same layout what's in front of you today, she got rid of that. I forgot the size, 20 by 30 pool or whatever it was, and has a single drop-in unit spa that I've provided you, the manufacturer and pictures of. The outside dimensions of that spa are, I believe, 14 by 7 and 1/2, like any spa, it has the benches and the chaise lounge, it's now a really good-sized jacuzzi, but because it is not eight or 10 feet deep like a pool, it didn't require those high walls like the pool did, and we were able to start a fence, and if you look at the green, the green line on the bottom of the picture that's before you is a pre-existing six-foot fence that in its last section slides down to four feet. So, we have tied into that fence, and we have now encased the entire deck and pool area with a four-foot fence that doesn't have the stone wall, doesn't have the moat, doesn't have anything to climb up. That four-foot fence is a fence that would meet the criteria for a swimming pool and a spa in apparently every town but Portsmouth, because Portsmouth still has a six-foot for the swimming pool. Portsmouth is actually silent to a spa. But, again, you're asking, and I provided the information of the make, the model, and the manufacturer of not only the hardcover locking cover of the spa that would require no fence, but also the floating foam cover that is also a safety feature. And I'd like to say that once we drop to a spa, I think, again, the law is pretty clear, we may not need a six-foot fence, but more importantly, I think that spa is, you know, certainly much less of an attractive nuisance, and unlike a pool that's left open when you're not using it, spas tend to have the heated insulated cover to preserve the heat when you're using it, or when you're not using it, you take it off when you are using it, and of course, there's also an electronic safety cover in addition to the four-foot fence. We not only put that four-foot fence all the way around, but you'll see, my client didn't really want to look at a fence, that was part of this, so we moved all the landscaping to the inside of the fence so that that landscaping will be designed that you generally can't see that fence, so the buffer from the outside for anyone trying to get in that have to scale the four-foot fence as well as get through the landscaped buffer before they climbed what's now only a 30-inch or so retaining wall because of the depth of the spa to get onto the wooden deck and patio. Other than that, as I told you last time, this petition meets, there's no variance required, there's no setbacks required, there's no lot coverage, it's merely the safety issue. Now, I have talked to Mr. Ames, who still reserves his right to be worried about our ordinance, but I went to Tiberden, Little Compton, Middletown, Jamestown, and Newport, and I know we're in Portsmouth and it doesn't matter, but I did think it important for you to know. Tiberden has no ordinance requiring a fence for a pool or a spa because they rely on the state building code. Little Compton, Middletown, Newport, and Jamestown all have four-foot ordinances for the pool, and I didn't ask them whether they disregard that ordinance in the event that somebody had a hard cover. But this four-foot fence meets the criteria in what appears to be 38 other cities and towns in Rhode Island, and I understand we have a six-foot, but it very specifically says under the accessory use statute that we have a six-foot fence for swimming pools. It is silent as to spas, so my argument, quite frankly, is that as to spas, Mr. Ames should look to the state building code, and the state building code without a cover says four feet, and with a cover says nothing at all. I am asking you merely to approve a four-foot fence that meets the criteria of a spa or swimming pool fence that is capable of keeping people out, and I think the standard is you can't put a ball, a four-inch sphere can't fit between the rails. And, and as a condition of dropping six foot to four, to the extent that's necessary because a spa is required to have a six-foot fence, we also, as a condition to the certificate of occupancy, Mr. Ames certifies that the automatic cover that is placed on this spa also is compliant with the regulations which would require no cover, so it's still a double coverage, if you will, from my point of view, but I would like to think that in listening to the comments at the end of the last meeting, I made sure it was a real four-foot fence and not a stone that you could come up and on top of a guardrail, and I went all the way around it instead of, you know, leaving those areas that neighbors had concerns, including the moat. Like I said, I think she lost her infinity pool, but she, quite frankly, didn't want to fight with her neighbors, and that's what we're asking you to approve tonight, I think it's reasonable, and I hope you will, I have her and Ray Mayo, the architect, if you have any questions.
All right, so, Mr. Spella, just to clarify for the record, so, what you're seeking now is a, and this is pertaining to the drawing received by the town on September 14th, it's entitled SP1, full enclosure plan dated 9/1/2020, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and what you're seeking is a two-foot height variance for that portion shown in red around the depth, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and?
To the extent that, to the extent that your six-foot pool ordinance applies to a spa, but I recognize that this spa is 14 by 7 and not 3 by 3, and I don't want to get just as soon asked for the variance rather than debate over what it is.
So, the infinity pool part is now withdrawn and is being replaced by a 14 foot by 7 and 1/2 foot by 4 foot 4-inch water of depth spa with an auto cover, correct?
That is correct, and if you look at the next two, the chairman specifically wanted to know the the type of cover, and I actually put the order sheet, the invoice sheet in the next two exhibits showing that the cover met the ASTME criteria and the make and model of that, and again, that is, this is a self-contained unit, the only difference between this unit and the spa you may go buy at, you know, a local store, is that this self-contained unit is designed to drop down and be used at a flush level.
Right. Mr. Borden, your chair.
Hi, Mr. Borden.
Just to ask a stupid question, the pool is gone?
Gone.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, the pool is gone.
It's just like a hot tub?
Yeah, it's, and the pictures are there, it's a hot tub, it's, it has a bench, it has an area that they, an option called a chaise lounge, it's 7 and 1/2 feet wide, so that's twice as wide as your bathtub, plus or minus, and it's 14 feet long, not where the water is, but outside to outside, those are the outside dimensions, but let's assume 13 feet of water, and it's, the depth, I believe, is 54 inches. But those, I enclosed the spec sheet for you, so it's just a spa now, and I, I was a little upset she didn't have the faith in me to come back here, but that, she really just does not want to fight with her neighbors, does not want to get into appeal processes, does not want to have me try to go convince the Superior Court that I'm correct, so that's what we're asking for, and.
Okay. Any, any members of the board have any questions? Mr. Furell, do you have any questions?
Yes, sir, I do have a question. Can, can, can anyone provide any perhaps history on, does the town typically require a fence around a spa? The difference between a spa and a swimming pool, kind of shaky, so I'm just wondering, what has been your experience in the past?
I can answer that a little bit, if you would like, because Gareth says that when it's time to decide whether a pool goes up, he uses a definition that basically if it holds X gallons, so kind of everything's a pool. With that said, on the other hand, doesn't require six-foot fences around all your, what I call, above-ground drop-in spas, which I'll leave you to your vices, I didn't measure them, but I'm assuming they're 48-inch sides or so. So, if it's at ground level, I think it's fair to say he thinks if you can drown in it, and it's for recreational use. With that said, he said that I was correct, that if you call it a fish pond, we don't put a fence around it, and we don't fence the, obviously, the ocean that's 50 feet the other way of this, you know, right downhill from this, but I think he says in fairness that if it's big enough and it's on the ground, he called everything a fence requirement. He was never asked to pass judgment on the difference between four-foot and six-foot if it was characterized as a spa versus a pool.
Can I answer your question, Mr. Furell?
Partially, I also wondered what has been the experience of any other board member relative to?
I gotta be honest with you, I'll speak for myself, and then Mr. Borden came, we've both been on this board about the same amount of time, but I have to be honest with you, this is the first one I've ever seen come through as a spa, okay, and I drive around town and see a number of above, I'm going to call them above-ground hot tubs, which are 12-foot in height, probably at least three to four foot depth, but I've never had a spa like this come across us. The only thing that would be close, but again, it was, I want to say double the length, and probably the width would be what's called a, one of these swimming type.
Lap pool.
Right, a lap pool, but they're totally much larger than this, and that's the only other thing close I've ever seen.
Okay. I was kind of thinking of it as, I don't think you could swim in this thing, it's not big enough.
No, no.
Maybe that drives it into the spa range where you stand in it or sit in it, and then it is more, it's more similar to the hot tub than it is a swimming pool, and therefore maybe should be treated as such.
Well, that's what we'll decide tonight.
That's the only question I had, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Poblakis, do you have any questions? You're muted, Kathleen.
No, not at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Horowitz.
The only thing I want to say is I think it's unfortunate the client gave up on the pool, but I think this is a really good, simple solution.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions, is there anything you want to add, Mr. Spella? I do have a couple of letters that I do need to read and ask for abutters, or?
With the exception of addressing something that might come up, I'd be done, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Before I read the letters, are there any abutters or interested parties that would like to speak to this? If you're on, if you're on the Zoom meeting, you can raise your hand on mic if they called in, what do they do?
Star 6.
Star 6 if you've called in.
Sorry, it's star 9.
Star 9 if you called in.
It's star 6 unmutes you, or me not you. We do have Carol on that has their hand raised.
Okay.
Who will have it up. Please identify yourself, your name and address.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
This isn't Carol, but this is Rob, our husband.
All right, can we have your full name and address, please?
Rob Petrie, 153 Fisher Circle, right across the street.
Mr. Petrie, you swear to tell the truth?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Petrie.
All right, so there's a few things, first of all, this lawyer gentleman continues to talk about how she'd rather not fight with her neighbors. It's not a fight, we're just trying to make things right, make things safe for the neighborhood. So, I'm not really, I don't, that kind of rubs me the wrong way. If, you know, she can certainly come over and talk to us anytime, my door is always unlocked, and I'm always available. Second of all, I'm really sorry that the pool had to go, or, you know, you guys got to this point. I thought it was a great design, a great idea, with a little bit of variations, I thought it would look awesome, and it's too bad, so I'm sorry for being a nudge, we are abutters, I mean, if we're 1%, 0.001% of the town, or of the abutting neighbors two, three, four, five houses away, so it's unfortunate, I think you should, whatever, you guys have already hacked it out, and you've come to this conclusion. So, the next thing I want to mention is, in our ordinances, that none of you guys have brought up, and that if you looked it up in our our ordinances, that the building code defines a swimming pool as a structure intended for swimming or recreational bathing that is over 24 inches deep. So, nobody's saying that it's greater than 24, I don't care if it's a, if you're calling it a swimming hole, a fishing pond, or whatever it is you think you want to call it, it's a spa now. It's not a pool, you want to call it a spa, I'll call it a spa, but it's greater than 24 inches. So, that being said, are you going to bathe in it, are you going to sit in it and hang out? Yeah, of course you are. So, with that respect, I mean, according to our ordinance, it's considered, considered, based on the verbiage, a swimming pool. So, whether or not it's 10 feet long or 18 feet wide, I don't care, if it's greater than 24 inches, our town considers it a swimming pool. Correct?
I will agree with you, Mr. Petrie, but I will also add this, that this ordinance was written many years ago, before things like this.
Oh, then you need to.
Hear me out, please, so, you're correcting that definition, but that means any hot tub sitting in this town, if the building inspector were to drive by, could cite everyone on those, so, at one point, there is a little bit of common sense that comes into play, our ordinance is being rewritten as we speak.
Good, okay.
And that's why we have a zoning board review, just for things like this.
Okay, no, that sounds good.
I think, hello, my name's Carol, Carol Petrie, I'm Rob's wife.
You swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Excuse me, that's my job, thank you.
Sorry. What happens behind a Zoom screen.
Yeah, exactly.
So.
Excuse me, who is speaking?
This is Carol Petrie.
Okay.
I'm just Rob's wife.
Okay, I have to, for the record, ask you for your address.
Sure, it's 153 Fisher Circle, Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
Thank you, and you do swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I think just summarizing, I can, we completely agree with common sense and understand that there are, there are some things that are a little bit higher, or they're above-ground, or whatever. I think the question that I have as a taxpayer of Rhode Island in our town is that if we agree to this tonight, because of common sense rule over what the town ordinance says for today, September 17th, 2020, that's on the record, if we agree to this, where's the liability of this town if, God forbid, something does happen, and we today go against our ordinance and say, yeah, common sense says this is okay, where's our liability as a town, because in this town, we are the taxpayers, everything in this town is on our backs, and I would like to understand that part before we would say we agree with neighbors.
Mr. Gavin, you want to attack that, but I will say this, I will say that every petition we hear tonight, we're making decisions on variances and variations away from the ordinance, that's what the zoning board review is here for. So, it's not just this petition, it would be many petitions we hear, but, Mr. Gavin, I'd like you to answer that question.
Let me, let me get my speaker on, okay. I just don't want to speculate on a question like that, it's, first of all, someone say where this definition of swimming pool, I don't, I don't see it off the top of my head in, in the ordinance, that the 24, are you talking about the building code, or are you talking about the zoning ordinance? I don't really see where that is, just skimming through the ordinance, but secondly, I'm not going to just speculate on a question like that, totally hypothetical question about liability on some totally undefined incident, it's just not a proper question, and I'm not comfortable answering it, to tell you the truth, I don't, you know. It's just a question incapable of being reasonably answered, so.
You are the town social, and by all means, I appreciate that.
But if the witnesses can, they said that there's, the town ordinance, say, 24-inch deep is considered a swimming pool, if someone could cite what they're referring to?
I got my thing here, am I on? Hello?
Yes, you are.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, I'm on the, I'm on the portsmouthri.com on our zoning information, if you scroll down right before it says contact us, Michael Essiola, da-da-da, it's right in that paragraph right there.
I was looking at the ordinance itself, I don't.
It says, I want a swimming pool, what do I need to do? Do I have a fence around my swimming pool, do I need to get a billing permit? And it says, the state building code defines a swimming pool as any structure intended for swimming or recreational bathing that is over 24 inches deep. Portsmouth zoning ordinance requires you, your swimming pool enclosed by a six-foot fence and the pool area locked when not in use, this is on the.
Okay, so, so that's a building code issue, this is, we're here on a zoning petition, not a building code issue, so, that's an issue for our building official, and here we are.
So, I missed something?
Kevin, the only thing I'd like to say is, I was going to point that out, and as I talked to Gareth, it's a little bit of an inconsistency to say, I'm going to go to the state building code and rely on what the definition of a pool is, but I'm going to ignore the state building code when it says I don't need a fence around this one. You can, if you want to live and die by that code, I'm your guy, but I don't think you can necessarily pick pieces, just trying to compromise and giving you a four-foot fence and a cover.
Mr. Petrie, is there anything else you'd like to add?
I guess you all are just answering, is this to code or not? And if it is, then we support it.
Yeah, exactly, I mean, if they want to sign off that, you know, they take liability, I don't want the town getting sued, and some lawyer.
I'm not signing off on taking liability for anything, sir.
No, I know you're saying that, but.
Question before the board, and I don't think these questions are really appropriate or pertinent to the petition that's before this board.
Well, if you're willing to, if you're willing to let it pass, then why aren't you? I mean, why would you not?
I'm done, I don't think this is an appropriate dialogue, and.
Excuse me, folks.
Yeah.
This is the chairman.
Yeah.
This is, whether, whether there's live voters with the town or not is not up for debate, that's not what this petition is about.
No.
So, you know, you have the right to say what you'd like as far as you're in agreement, you're opposed, these are the reasons, but above and beyond, this is not the form for a debate on whether the town's liable, if it's approved, et cetera.
Are we on?
Mr. Petrie, this is Petrie.
I think we just want to say, if it's to code, we agree, if it's not, we don't agree, that's all.
All right. Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else? Okay, I do have a letter from Kathleen Furell of 189 Fisher Circle that I will read. Dear Mr. Scholler, and it's dated September 16th, 2020, thank you for reviewing my concerns about the requested pool fence variant of 156 Fisher Circle. As a former trauma nurse and grandmother, I have serious reservations regarding the requesting exception to Portsmouth's requirement of a six-foot pool fence. Founding is a waiting cause of death in one 12-year-old, it can happen in as little as 20 to 60 seconds, and it can occur in less than two inches of water, in the United States, approximately three children drown each day. In addition to the proposed fence height, I question the safety of the moat, grate, and lack of fencing where the wall and waterfall edge meet. It was stated that they plan to install metal cover that would require the use of said cover anytime the pool is left unattended, even in minutes. Ultimately, preservation of a view should not supersede safety. There are multiple options for clear fencing, including a frameless glass tile. As a resident of Portsmouth, will the town's board be held liable for any tragedies caused if they grant this exception? I referenced 2007 lawsuit against the city of Greenwich, Connecticut for improper inspection of a pool's blueprint leading to the drowning of the homeowner's 60-year-old son. You would also be sent in a present for any future pool fence enforcement. Thank you and the board for your time and attention, so I will just do things in this letter. First of all, the reference to the lawsuit of the city of East Greenwich was for the improper inspection of a pool's blueprint. That would be an improper inspection by the inspecting authorities, okay? inspecting authorities, okay, not of the zoning board reviewing granting a variance. Would we be setting a precedent for any future pool fencing? Now, any petition that requires a variance is heard on the merits of that petition itself and only that petition. It doesn't say if it's granted for one, then everybody else can come in, cartwatch, and do what they want. So, um, and that's that on, so, Mr. Shaw, is there anyone else on that's done? No, okay. All right, Mr. Shaw, any last words?
No, just thank you. And that second letter clearly addressed the last drawing, even though it was dated after this drawing, because it specifically addressed the moat. So I know some of those concerns were fully rectified in your mind.
Okay.
Mr.? Go ahead, Mr. Borden. Just to, as I like to say, calibrate it.
Yep.
This petition is a dimensional variance.
It's a two-foot length variance.
So, that means it's dimensional. So it's not special use. So it's hardship of mine to more than a mere inconvenience, least relieved necessary. It's not safety, health, comprehensive community plan. Correct. Thank you.
That's correct.
Okay. Seeing that, does any of the board members have any last questions that are seen on this? Mr. Terrell, any last questions?
No, sir, no questions.
Okay, Ms. Bob Lachis?
Uh, no, not this, no, I don't have any more questions. I don't have any.
Ms. Horowitz, any last questions?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. All right. So Timothy and Anne Marie Corbett are before this board, taxes on this map 62 lot 74, seeking a two-foot fence height variance on their property located on map 62 lot 74, which is 156 Fisher Circle. As per the proposed plan of SP1 pool enclosure plan, Corbett residence dated 9/1/2020, for the purpose of surrounding their spa, which has been presented to this board to be, and please give me a minute to find that correct drawing. It is, if I am not mistaken, 14 feet length, seven feet wide, seven and a half feet wide, and four foot, four inches in depth. Mr. Borden.
Mr. Chairman, this is an interesting petition, and even though the criteria for relief is dimensional, you can't ignore the elephant in the room in regards to safety and health. Clearly, my concern would be if a child or someone were to pass through all these barriers and drown. That's really the issue here. Petitioner has foregone the pool and amended their petition for a spa. So it's no longer the attractive nuisance. Plus, um, they put the fence around the entire perimeter, which is four feet, which is the Rhode Island state law, even though our Portsmouth zoning ordinance hasn't been revised yet. In addition to the four-foot fence, then you have to traverse all of the landscaping and then get to the spa. So if you're a four-year-old or a six-year-old, it's extremely unlikely that you're going to traverse all of these issues to get to the spa and drown. So in my opinion, I think that this is relatively a safe proposal and, um, deny would amount to more than a mere inconvenience. And I think it's the least relieved necessary considering that the state ordinance is four feet. So I vote to approve.
Thank you very much. Mr. Borden, Mr. Terrell?
Mr. Chairman, I also vote to approve. I believe the fence and cover combination satisfies safety requirements, and to deny this petition would amount to more than a mere inconvenience.
Thank you. Ms. Bob Lachis?
I vote to deny. I don't think that there's any compromise on safety. And as a grandmother and a, and a mother of a daughter who could climb over any fence there ever was, I don't think there's any limit on safety. Um, and I think it's irrelevant what other towns do. I'm glad we have a six-foot fence, so I vote to deny.
Thank you, Ms. Bob Lachis. Ms. Horowitz?
I vote to approve for reasons previously stated by Mr. Borden.
Thank you. The chairman also votes to approve for reasons previously stated by both Mr. Borden and Mr. Terrell. Um, I think we're in a, in a position where, to Mr. Terrell's question earlier on, I want to know, had we ever heard something regarding the spa? And my answer was, in almost 20 years being on board, no. And again, when I drive around town, I can almost pick apart anything that would come to the criteria of what the spa is, and there's not even a fence around it, but a lot of four-foot fence. I think the applicant has made, uh, has been very reasonable in modifying that petition. I think there are, um, more than enough safety, uh, instances in place. So I do think to deny amounts more than a mere inconvenience. So I'm approving as well. So it's been approved for what?
Thank you. I know that this is difficult for everyone, and I, I really do expect there's going to be some state law coming down that, um, probably supersedes everything. But thank you for listening. Thank you for understanding. I, I get it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bye.
Okay, I, um, for the record, um, I see Mr. Wadika is on and also Mr. Reposa. Mr. Wadika, just for the record, you are on your correct? Mr. Wadika?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, Mr. Reposa?
Here, here.
All right. So the next item on the agenda is a petition by William Breyer, applicant, Jerome Kirby, owner, seeking a special use permit to construct an 1800 square foot building to operate a gunsmith services in Portsmouth Industrial Park at zero I point out, which is tax cessers map 38 lot 16. Uh, here in this petition will be Mr. Borden, Mr. Terrell, Ms. Bob Lachis, um, Mr. Reposa, uh, and myself, uh, with Ms. Horowitz as the alternate. Now, just for the board members, uh, so you know, there is a section in our ordinance that pertains specifically to the industrial park, and it's in Article 7, Section F. It's entitled limited light industrial, and you'll see it's map 38 with the lots, including this one, lot 16. All right. Do we have Mr. Breyer and/or Mr. Kirby?
Uh, we have Mr. Breyer.
Yes, this is Henry Breyer.
Uh, Michael Murray.
All right. Well, let me ask, swear on Mr. Breyer first. Mr. Breyer, raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
All right. Your full name and address for our secretary, please?
Henry William Breyer the fourth, 129 Indian Avenue, Portsmouth, Rhode Island, 02871.
Okay. Mr. Breyer, you're being represented by who?
Michael Murray. Michael Murray, 37 Mill Street, Newport, Rhode Island. I'm the attorney for the petitioner.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Go ahead.
Uh, yes, good evening. Um, as I said, Michael Murray, attorney for the petitioner. The petitioner is a Quidnick Gunsmithing LLC. It's Rhode Island LLC. The sole member of the LLC is Henry William Breyer, uh, also known as Bill Breyer. Bill is a Portsmouth resident living at 129 Indian Avenue, Portsmouth, Rhode Island. And, uh, we're here tonight uh, seeking, uh, permission for a special use permit. With us in addition to Mr. Breyer is Lynn Small, professional engineer. She's the engineer for the project, and John Vett, builder and owner of Park Avenue Modular Building Company. Uh, the property is currently in the industrial park. It's a vacant lot on High Street, lot 38 lot 16. Um, as mentioned, we're looking for a special use permit. It's under Section 5, uh, Article 5, Section E5, uh, to build an 1800 square foot, uh, structure to be used as a gunsmithing business. Um, and so I would, uh, ask at this time that maybe Mr. Breyer, um, uh, he, he would present, uh, he's a Portsmouth resident. This is going to be a retirement business for him. And, um, he has been sworn in. I'd ask Bill, uh, do you have, uh, statements you'd like to make uh, for the members of the, uh, zoning board?
Yes, thank you, Michael. Um, so my name is Henry Breyer, and I've been Portsmouth resident for 22 years. I'm a real estate investor, and I have properties on the Indian Avenue and Green End Avenue. Um, as Michael said, I'm, uh, applying for this, uh, this variance to build a gunsmithing business as a retirement, uh, business. Um, the scope of work would be building, uh, target and hunting rifles, uh, one-off rifles for individual customers. I'd also be doing, uh, repairing and modifying firearms to improve safety and performance. I'd be finishing and refinishing firearms, metal and wood, building wood stocks and parts, and tuning and producing ammunition, uh, small lots of ammunition to improve firearms accuracy. Uh, there would be no firearms shooting on the property. All firearms testing would be done at a, a gun range, a local gun range.
Anyone have any questions for, uh, Mr. Breyer?
I actually do have a couple, um, just some clarification. So, um, Mr. Breyer, let's start off with ammunition. Will you be just selling ammunition? Will you be reloading ammunition?
I'll be reloading ammunition. Um, part of the business will be if somebody brings in a firearm that, uh, that doesn't shoot to, uh, their specifications in terms of accuracy, I will be, uh, tuning ammunition to, uh, to make it shoot better in their firearm. Um, I don't tend, I don't intend to sell ammunition. I won't have stocks of ammunition. Generally, the people who'd be buying my firearms would be hand loading their own ammunition, and I would be assisting them in the, uh, what's called load development process.
Right, I'm fully familiar with that. So, um, the, uh, basically your powder and your charges, where is that going to be stored? Do you have a rough guesstimate as to how much will be stored in the building? I assume, of course, it would be in an explosion-proof container, et cetera.
It's actually, um, according to the fire code, uh, unless you, I believe it's, uh, 50, unless you're storing 50 pounds of ammunition, it's not supposed to be in an explosion-proof container. Uh, the, the idea is, is that an explosion-proof container contains the, uh, the gases, uh, that would be expanding. And that's, uh, that's the type of, um, uh, powder that I'd be using. So it's not the old-style powder that you would think of from, uh, from the movies where somebody puts a keg of powder on the side of a hill, lights a fuse, and it's.
It's not black powder.
Right, exactly. So, um, for instance, you, you could take a, a can of this, uh, put a fuse on it, light it in, in a field, and all you'd see is a very light puff of smoke. There'd be no explosion. Um, so in, in terms of how much I'd be storing, I'd be storing very small amounts. So for instance, uh, one of the cartridges that I load for takes what's known as grains of ammunition, or grains of powder.
Powder.
Sorry, of, uh, of what they call smokeless powder. Um, the one pound of, uh, a, a one-pound can of ammunition, or sorry, the powder, uh, has 7,000 grains, and each cartridge only takes about 32 grains. So if somebody came in to, to me, I would be probably having one can of their powder, one, one-pound can. Um, I would no, in no way be storing anywhere near 50 pounds of, of powder. And, uh, actually, individuals are allowed to store up to 50 pounds, um, in their home.
Okay, um, and the only other question that comes to mind right off the bat is, um, on firearms testing, yes, I understand fully that any firearms testing would be done off-site as there's not adequate spacing there for range. However, in the event you do have a firearm that is not firing, et cetera, there are containment vessels that I have seen in gunsmith shops before where you basically can fire within the containment. Uh, so just to ensure it fires, to discharge around, et cetera, to ensure the action works. Um, is there going to be anything like that in there?
I hadn't planned on it because I hadn't planned on discharging any firearms. I, I understand your question, but if, if somebody came to me with a firearm, the first thing I would have them do is ensure that it's unloaded. And if they said to me, uh, the, the cartridge is, is stuck in the, in the chamber, I would not let them in the door. We would, I would have them meet me at a range, and we could, uh, sort it out that way.
Right. So it's fair to say that rather than just saying no firearms testing, it's, there will be no discharging of any firearm within the building?
Exactly.
All right, thanks. You've answered my questions. Mr. Borden, anything before?
Yes, I, I have a question. I'm, I'm assuming, this is John Borden, Vice Chairman and Zoning Board. Um, I'm assuming that you have, um, security measures in place in terms of cameras and everything's going to be locked. Worst-case scenario, someone breaks in. Is it possible for them to get a weapon and ammunition?
Uh, so I can't say it's impossible because somebody could break into any safe. But I, so I'll be going, I'll be applying for a federal firearms license. And, uh, part of that, uh, procedure is having a, uh, an agent from the ATF come out to my location. Uh, and they want to see what's called, what they refer to as a secure location. Uh, each agent would define that a little differently, but I will have a, a combination of secure, of physical security measures, uh, steel doors, uh, windows, um, any firearms that I'm storing on the property would, uh, would be in a safe. Uh, I would also have electronic security measures, um, alarm systems that are connected to a central location and cameras. Um, I would not be able to get my federal firearms license without the approval of bringing out a safety officer.
Thank you. Uh, let me just check with the other board members. Um, Mr. Terrell, do you have any questions at this time?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I do have a question for Mr. Breyer. Sir, um, um, as you did, independent of the, of the ammunition loading side of your business, which I understand is, is, um, limited and more for testing purposes than to actually provide your client with a thousand rounds of ammunition, ignoring that for a moment, it, 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 it seems to me that the rest of your business could be characterized as precision machine and, and woodwork restoration. Is that fair?
That's, yes, it is. Actually, um, if you work, if you walk into my machine, my shop, it would look like a machine shop or woodworking shop. And, uh, I would say most any, uh, machine shop on the island could do the work that I'm doing, at least to have the machines that, uh, capable of doing that work.
So, so, so in terms of the, the external, um, uh, signature of the building, you know, the sound or odors or anything like that, th- this is kind of a, a relatively small, sounds kind of like a one-person machine shop and wood shop?
That's exactly what it is. A, a one person, I, you know, I, I can't say I wouldn't hire another person eventually, but, uh, it'll be a, basically a one-person machine shop and woodworking shop.
Yeah, but you don't expect to be, um, uh, manufacturing firearm components en masse?
No, not at all.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Okay. Ms. Bob Lachis, do you have any questions at this time?
Um, no, I do not. They've been answered. Thank you.
Mr. Reposa?
I do not at this time.
Oh, Ms. Horowitz, do you have any questions? Oh, Ms. Horowitz, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wadiga, I'll just, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Murray and Ms. Breyer, you can continue.
Oh, thank you. I'd like to introduce Lynn Small, professional engineer. She has, she's the project manager and the one that has done the plans that you're looking at. I'd like first to have her. She's testified on several occasions before the zoning and planning board of the town of Portsmouth. And I would like to request that she be accepted as an expert in her capacity as an engineer.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that Lynn Small be recognized as an expert in engineering.
That would be Mr. Borden making that motion. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, this has been Furell. I second the motion.
Thank you. And motion has been made in second to accept Lynn Small as an expert in engineering. So, all in favor, I'll go by roll call. Mr. Borden?
Mr. Borden approves, yes.
Mr. Furell?
Mr. Chairman, I approve.
Yes, Ms. Boblakis?
Yes, I approve.
Mr. Reposa?
Yes, I also approve.
And the chairman also votes as an I as well. So, go ahead, Ms. Small.
Good evening, Lynn Small, Sixth Valley Road, Middletown, where our office is. The site is a smaller site. The proposed building is only 18,000 square feet. It requires seven parking spaces. We tried to create a green type of project here where we have four paved spaces and then we have three additional spaces that would be grass, just so we don't have to ask for that variance from the town. There's a very low need for any parking on this site. So we didn't want to create any additional impervious areas that we didn't need. We will have the smallest septic in the world in the back, which is 100 gallons a day. That's the minimum size that the state allows. And in the front, because this site drains towards High Point Avenue, we have a drainage system which will meet the state, it meets the state regulations for water quality treatment and peak runoff. Right now, we have applications pending at DEM for freshwater wetlands review, Ripti's review, and septic review. There is public water in this area, so we expect to have a connection to that municipal system as well as electricity. I assume there's gas in this area. I have not reached out to National Grid Gas yet for a potential connection there. But if we don't get natural gas, we'd probably use something like propane. There is a garage entrance on the northern end of the building. I guess it's really on the eastern side of the building, but at the northern end, where we're kind of overlapping the ADA area where you would get out of your vehicle with the entrance to that portion of the garage. And then there's man doors on the north side. It does have one small bathroom, which is why we have a septic system, but there isn't any, there's not a lot going on in there. Most of it's storage and just a workplace. So from an engineering perspective, it was very light on the utilities and we tried to keep the impervious areas to a minimum. The project has the building closer up towards the front of the site to minimize any disturbance on site as well. So I don't know if you have any other questions, but it's kind of a simple application from an engineering standpoint.
Okay. Lynn, just a real quick question for you. So the runoff that's going to contain in what appears to be some sort of small retention barn, is that, is it an actual retention basin or is it underground?
No, those are, so you have, what happens is the runoff will basically sheet flow and we have a catch basin in the trap, the entrance driveway to the site that will capture your water quality flow and drain it directly into a lined sand filter that gives you your first flush and it takes out your, you know, your sediments and your oils and greases and things like that. And then any larger storms go over the weir into the detention basin, which is basically, we don't have anything underground for this project other than the pipe work. So that would provide you mitigation for your peak flow for your larger storms. And then the overflow is going to tie into the catch basin that's in High Point Avenue versus discharging across the ground.
How deep is that detention basin?
It's only a couple of feet deep. The top elevation's around 101 and the bottom is around 99.
So it'd be similar, similar to what we see is something like in front of Clements Market, something to that effect, correct?
Something to that effect, yeah. And I mean, it will never get that filled. So the overflow where is at 100, 100.5. So you're not ever going to see it completely filled up to the top. It would discharge.
In his last.
Gets that filled, there's probably trash clogging something.
All right, thank you. Any questions from Ms. Small from the board? No questions, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Furell, anything?
No, sir, no questions.
I'm off, Ms. Boblakis?
No, I don't, thank you.
Mr. Reposa? You have to unmute, Mr. Reposa.
Modern technology, sorry about that. No questions at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Horowitz, anything from you?
No questions at this time.
All right, thank you. Ms. Murray, continue.
Yes, if I could, just one question for Lynn Small. Lynn, the total square footage for this building, 1,800 square feet?
1,800 square feet, yes.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions for Ms. Small. I'd like to introduce John Witt, who is going to put up the building and he'll be the construction manager, Park Avenue Modular Building Company. And he is available to ask any question, to answer any questions at all relative to the type and nature of the building, interior, exterior. John, you there, are you? Hello, John? John Witt?
I'm here.
Hey, John.
Hi, I had to locate the unmute button. It was on the other side.
Do I have to tell the truth?
Yes, I do. John Wittkevich, 119 Homack Avenue, Portsmouth, Rhode Island, 02871.
Go ahead, John.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board review. Once again, Mr. Breyer has asked me to consider building this. It's an 1,800 square foot building, but it's a very nice building. I've subcontracted with a number of local subcontractors that'll be doing the work, crane excavation work. But Pridgen Steel, who, I purchased the McMillan building on Russo Road, and I'm sure you folks have seen that building, came out super, is the member, they're the one that's going to be doing the steel. And it's a very high-quality steel. It's a very good-looking steel. And I believe Mr. Breyer's already selected the colors of a beige and a green. We have an approved landscape plan. I have a high-tech security company that will be doing the security, both inside and outside with cameras. We've already been to the fire department and they're just waiting for our approval for us to get our building permit.
Any questions from Mr. Wittkevich?
No questions. The board has no questions.
Mr. Furell, any questions?
No, sir, no questions.
Ms. Boblakis?
No, thank you.
Mr. Reposa?
No questions.
Thank you. Ms. Horowitz?
No questions.
Chairman has no questions either. Thank you, Mr. Wittkevich.
Thank you, Chairman.
Anything else, Mr. Murray?
I'd just like to move at this time to accept as exhibit and become part of the permanent record, the reports of the planning board and the planning board advisory opinion.
Yeah, that's automatically part of the petition. And they are in a packet. For the public record, I will, I will read the advisory opinion of each. So the design review board advisory opinion was the design review board feels that the petitioner has met the criteria for site plan, building facade, landscaping, winding and signage as set forth in Portsmouth's design review. Criteria for architectural expression has been met in that it proposes to get in with the other buildings on the site and keep it with the barn style that was existing. And then the advisory opinion of the town planning board is, let's see, advisory opinion. And it was a motion made by Mr. Hart, making favorable advisory opinion for special use to zoning board review for clinic gunsmithing, LLC, Lot 38, Lot 16, 9.0 on the following conditions. The proposed plan receives Rhode Island DEM permits for wetlands and OWTS, the applicant will submit the landscape plan, which is in compliance with the design review board recommendation set forth in its advisory opinion of August 3rd and attached to Exhibit A. And that the fire department reviews the plan for stored chemicals and for fire protection system and it was voted all in favor. So those have been put into the record. Mr. Murray, is there anything else?
No, sir, just our position that would bet all the requirements under the zoning ordinance for special use permit, met all the setbacks, projects in conformance with the town of Portsmouth comprehensive plan and is not contrary to the health, safety and welfare of the citizens of the town of Portsmouth. And that would complete our presentation unless the board has any further questions.
Well, I do have to ask for butters or interested parties, Mr. Murray. So with that, for butters or interested parties, do I have anyone that would like to speak on this? I do have one letter in the file that I will get to.
There are no hands raised.
Okay, no hands raised. There is a letter in mail from, in the packet from Nancy Shaw Burgess, formerly known as Nancy Shaw McMahon of 112 Pleasant Street, Portsmouth. I'll read the letter, but not all the attachments. And it says, Dear zoning board, before purchasing my home September 1977, I met with Bob Kepenar. Bob owned the land that has become Portsmouth's industrial park. He showed me zoning regulations that promised no noise, no odor, no nights, no weekends. It was also promised there would be a 50-foot wooden buffer between the neighbors and the start of any parking lot, et cetera. I was told there would be no poles as everything would be below ground. One, 1986, the buffer zone was bulldozed down. No more screening for the neighbors. Section 41D4, and zoning said there was to be double row of evergreens for 26 years. There were never any green planted. 1988, the two-tall building was under construction. The town allowed a 26-foot building to be erected when the plans called for a limit of 17. The neighbors hired a lawyer and had the building taken down. Let's see, 1993, the town allowed Sunfish Laser Company to occupy a space behind the Pleasant Street Long Metal subdivision. The few who owned from the fiberglass boat parks were a danger to health of the residents. Again, the Portsmouth taxpayers had to fight for their rights to have the business moved. 1994, the Providence German moved into the building behind the neighbors. The ads were stuffed into papers, bundled and distributed all around the state. Trucks would back up to the loading dock at 3 a.m. every night. The neighbors had to fight to have that business moved. 1998, the dumpster problems began. Each time new business is occupied a space in the building, they would need to be asked to contact the dumpster company they had hired to tell them it is not appropriate attempt to dumpster at 3, 4, or 5 a.m. or even 6 a.m. This is inconsiderate, noise issue has been a problem for 22 years. 1999, the business has occupied one of the spaces, the business that occupied one of the spaces worked three shifts around the clock to keep the back door of the building open in the summer, a very loud buzzing noise from metal cutting computer all night. 2000, a cell phone tower was planned to be put behind the neighbors. After attending, a number of town meetings agreed that the tower near the police station would be used by multiple cell phone companies. The new tower would not be constructed. 2012, the buffer zone again was allowed. The owner of the building, Laura Donna Lister, planted evergreens. She did not plant enough to provide proper screening, but she did good effort after much discussion. 2012 to present, the grass, which was to be a 50-foot wooden buffer zone, now one behind the building, gets cut at 5:36, 6:30, often. It's become very tiresome to jump out of bed at that hour, get in the car and ask a lawn crew to start later in the future. My guess is that you have become exhausted reading this. Imagine how exhausting this list of issues and what have been for the butters. The town of Portsmouth has not honored its promise to the residences. We have not been protected by the town. I received a letter from the zoning board regarding, regarding to an application for a special permit to construct a building for the gunsmith service. Many questions need to be answered. Will this business operate night to weekend? Will there be noise, odor, visual screening? Where will the building be in relation to my home, to the homes? Will there be any issue of any kind in the bill? If the answer to the question four is yes, then I say absolutely not. With what is going on in our country in the past months, the last thing we need next to our homes, a gun business. Not meant to be funny. We've all seen what Rambo did in the gun shop. That was just a movie. Reality of the unrest in America is not just a movie. The town needs to step up and protect its citizens. As described above, we've had to constantly fight for a peaceful neighborhood for too long. Between the virus and the unrest in America, we do not need anything else to worry about. Please feel free to call me at any time. Sincerely, Nancy Shaw Burgess, formerly Nancy Shaw McMahon. And there are a number of attachments, various letters dating back to '85, '86, newspaper articles, et cetera, that she had provided. And I don't believe she is on the meeting to answer any questions. Nothing, okay. All right, are there any other butters or interested parties to this that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none. William Breyer, 129 Indian Avenue, was before the board, Tax Assessor's Mot, Map 38, Lot 16, zoning, light industrial, seeking to construct a building to provide a service business for gunsmithing. Mr. Borden?
Mr. Chairman, the gunsmithing business that's being proposed, in my opinion, meets all the special use criteria. There is not going to be any live ammunition that's going to be fired in this building. This has been approved by the planning board. It's gone through design review. The fire department has approved this or they're close to approving this. There are no noise, smoke, or odors issue. It's certainly compatible with the surrounding area in regards to the industrial park. I think it meets all the criteria and I vote to approve. Thank you. Mr. Furell?
Mr. Chairman, I vote to approve this special use permit. The light industrial definition seems tailor-made for this kind of operation, which is basically a metal shop, you know, metal fabric. And I agree with Mr. Borden that it complies and satisfies the special use permit criteria. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Boblakis? There you go. Kathleen, you're muted. Could you unmute?
How's that? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, I'm sorry. I agree with Mr. Borden and I vote to approve the special use permit.
Thank you. Mr. Reposa?
I agree with my peers and also vote to approve the special use permit.
Thank you. The chairman also votes to approve the special use permit as well. I will review the criteria, just for the record. The use will not be detrimental to the strong bean area. It is allowed use within the industrial park. It will be compatible with neighboring land uses. Again, it's within the Again, it's within the light industrial, industrial park, and it is allowed. It will not create a nuisance or hazard in the neighborhood. I'm actually familiar with gunsmithing shops, and yes, there is no really noise or anything to that effect. Adequate protections afforded to the property by use of open space and planning, design review, and the planning board have both have reviewed that. There has been improved landscaping plan. Safety of access and adequate parking are provided. Control of noise, smoke, odors, lighting, and any other objectionable features provided. Solar rights to the butters are provided for. The proposed use will be in conformance of the purpose and intent of the comprehensive planning and zoning ordinance of the Town of Portsmouth, and the health and safety of welfare of the community protected, and it is consistent with the purpose of design standards set forth in Article 9, Section D. It does not, it is not within the town set district, so that doesn't fall under. So, Mr. Brier, Mr. Murray, that has been approved.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You too.
The, before we get to the next petition, the board's going to take a five-minute break.
We're on break.
All right, zoning board review is back in session. Next item on the agenda is petition by Mark Smith of 23 Cove Street.
Let's make sure we have everyone back here.
Okay, let's see.
Eric, Jill.
All right, is, he's not back yet. Let's see, Sue's back. Kevin back?
I'm not sure.
Mr. Gaddy, you're back with us?
Yes, I'm here all along. I've just been keeping my video off.
Okay, we appreciate that.
That's necessary. I do what I can for aesthetics.
I think we're waiting on Mr. Posa, Mr. Ladiga. We'll give it, we've got one more minute, but we do have enough to start, so. All right, so, let's see.
Bill's back.
Who's back? Bill's back. All right. Eric's not back, but we'll continue on. So, hearing this petition, petition of Mark Smith of 23 Cove Street, Portsmouth, will be Mr. Borden, Mr. Furell, Mr. Paul Blackus, and Mr. Horowitz, and myself. We have a petition by Mark Smith of 23 Cove Street, Portsmouth, Rhode Island, tax assessors lot 20, lot 357 or 359? Let me write that. Let's see, 357. Seeking a dimensional variance or a wet coverage. Basically, they're seeking dimensional variance to put their shed to the side of their yard versus in the rear of the property where it's allowed. So, is Mr. Smith on?
Hello?
Mr. Smith, raise your hand. Want to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Smith, you want to explain to the board what you're trying to do?
I'm just trying to have a shed I can use on my property. It's kind of it. I was approved by the town to get a building permit and to place it where it's placed, and then the permit was revoked.
Okay, well, so, Mr. Smith, I get where you were allowed a building permit if you were constructing it. As you know, and I'm sure you're aware by now, that a 10 by, 12 by 10 shed is allowed as a matter of right. If you build one or construct it, yes, you need building permit. But a building permit does not include the location. Location for shed, as you may be aware by now, is allowed three feet from the property line in the rear of the property. And the only venue that can allow any alterations to that is this board. So, I don't see anywhere on the building permit where the building official who would not have had the right said that you could put it on the side of your property.
I am aware of that. I was told that zoning department had eyes on it too, and I had a letter saying that if you put the shed here, it will be in compliance. And so, I put it exactly, I mean, there was actually a site visit by the building inspector, and he was supposedly working with zoning department, and I'm not, I'm not sure what happened after that.
Well, I guess I'm going back to, go back by what's in the file here, and I see the building permit was pulled in June of 2019, and then in December of 2019, your permit was suspended by the building official because it says you've placed the storage shed on outside of the rear yard, and he states the ordinance in there. Then, on January 22nd, there is a letter in here from the zoning enforcement official of Matt Kent. It's in response, "You have installed a shed inside your subject property and are not in compliance. You're hereby summoned to appear in municipal court, 9th October 19th, 2020," and I don't know whatever became of that. Did you ever go to municipal court? You're muted, Mr. Smith.
Sorry, I've been about five times now, I believe.
Okay, and what was the outcome from that?
They just kept saying to file the petition, and while I filed the petition, well, COVID had us shut down for a while, as you might be aware. The first time I went, they, I guess I didn't know how a petition worked.
Okay.
I was kind of waiting for someone to contact me about the next step, so I went to court an extra time. And the time I went back, I was a little upset that I was asked for all the same info I had given previously, but except that there was $150 fee this time, although it was all in record. I do have the letter I could read you from building inspector. That's, I think it'll be part of the file, but I guess it's not.
Is it the letter, is it, is it the letter dated December 17th, 2019?
There's no date on the letter. It's not, it's telling me I'm allowed to, it's from Matt Kent, and it was supposedly also, Mike Assiola also was part of the discussion originally, and they issued this letter in conjunction. I was, can I read? It's very short.
Absolutely. We have Mr. Shaw here, so.
Says, "This letter is in response to the location of the shed to be installed on subject property. The town zoning states the shed must be installed in the property backyard. In the case of this property, the house is located at the rear of the property. To comply with the intent of the code, the shed must be located behind the face of the house as shown on your revised site plan submitted with your building permit application. Signed, Matt Kent."
Chairman, not I can, I can add some creation to that.
I'm glad, Mr. Shaw, if you could.
After that letter was issued, it brought our attention that in the code, it knew had to, it specified it was in the rear yard. I had misinterpreted the ordinance originally, so it was, it wasn't, the permit was issued in error based on my interpretation.
Okay. So, Mr. Smith, let me ask you a question.
Sure.
Why can the shed, if you move the shed to the rear of the property, refitting from the property line, you don't need a variance from us. And remember, our ordinance calls for the least relief necessary, okay? So, and a hardship that amounts to more than a mere inconvenience. So, I've actually gone to the property, I've visited it, I also drove up and down Cove Street, and I do not recall seeing one other home on Cove Street that the shed is on the side. They're all in the rear on that, which I agree is kind of unusual for Island Park. You usually find one here or there that's front, but your particular yard, there seems to be plenty of room in the back where the flower garden is, for lack of a better term, where the shed could go, and you wouldn't even be here tonight. So, why can't the shed go back?
Well, I've spent a lot of money on putting the shed where it already is, and I was approved to put it there, and I just don't feel like I should bear the burden of paying to move a shed again. Personally, I mean, not to sound mean, that's, those are my thoughts, and also I have a very nice landscape bed back there that I spent a lot of money on removing all the trees, tilling, bringing in topsoil, manure. Spent a lot of money on that too, and I don't want to go drop my shed in it now.
All right, so, let me just go on with this before I have other members. So, you've done landscaping in the back, you've put your shed inside, what's in the shed? What's, what's in the shed?
I have lots of children's toys. I have various fertilizers, lawn mowers, tillers, rake, shovels, you know, the stuff that's normally in sheds. I don't really have anywhere else to store those types of things. I don't want fuel under my house, in my basement.
And let me stop you right there, because that was my next question. So, you don't want the fuel in your house, but it's okay to put it in the shed, which is right next to a neighbor's house, and I believe it's a wood fence between the two, but that's okay?
Well, in fairness, I have sheds on both, both my other sides of my house. I mean, I know that I bought the house that way, but, and there was a shed on the side yard of Cove Street, the one that's for sale. It disappeared two months ago, but it was there for about a year, a much, much larger than my 8 by 10 shed. That was down on the, and on the left.
That wasn't there when I grew up.
And I know that doesn't matter. I just, it was, I've made it the observation.
I'm just trying to find the hardship and, you know.
The hardship is I've just already spent a lot of money on putting the shed where I was told it can go, and I, I don't find that it's fair for me to spend another 600 bucks to move a shed again.
Okay, all right.
And I also don't want to put it in my landscape bed, and I mean, that's only about a four-foot rear yard. It's only about four feet wide, so, I mean, you move the shed back there, and you have, what, one-eighth of the shed? Is that even in the rear yard? Because I need to have a three-foot set, you know, I have the three-foot buffer back there. So, one-eighth of the shed's actually only in the rear yard.
Now, not if you place it three feet from the rear property line.
Right.
I'm saying, what you're saying is, you don't want to move your landscaping to put your shed where it's allowed, correct?
Is it really allowed? It's not in the rear yard. I mean, one-eighth of it.
That, that is the rear yard. Where that, the rear yard is not behind the house. The rear yard is the rear property line.
Right, but do you understand what I'm saying? If I offset it three feet, all of a sudden I have an eight by one area of my shed that's actually in that quote-unquote rear yard. So, the shed's not even in the rear yard, it's one-eighth in the rear yard.
Okay, because it's behind the house. Yeah, I know, I got it.
Okay, I have no other questions. Mr. Morton? No question? I didn't think so. Mr. Furell?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I believe the way I'm looking at this house, the, the home is within just a few feet of the rear property line, and the backyard would be defined as that few feet of space? Is that correct? So, there, there is insufficient space in the backyard to put a, a eight by 12-foot shed?
It's eight by 10, but correct.
Okay, eight by 10. As I'm, as I'm reading this, this diagram, it looks like Mr. Smith cannot, the, the orientation of his home and the, the design of his lot precludes him from being in full compliance with the, the ordinance.
That's all I perceive or interpreted the ordinance correct.
Mr. Furell, I would agree with that, except one thing. Remember the term least relief necessary. So, if some is better than none at all, correct?
Yes, sir.
Just throwing that out there.
Yes, sir, I just wanted to confirm that I was reading this correctly, that it's Yes, sir, I just wanted to confirm that I was reading this correctly, that it's, and, and that my conclusion is at least technically correct, that, that it's impossible to fully satisfy the ordinance. And this does come down to, uh, a, a question of least relief necessary. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Morton, uh, Mr. Morton, uh, has a question based on Mr. Furell's comments. Just as I'd like to say, to get calibrated and understand, in regards to the shed's location right now, how close is it to the quote unquote backyard?
One twenty-two percent.
Assuming, well, let me, let me clarify my question. Assuming that the backyard starts at the end of your house in terms of the rear elevation, is the shed close to your backyard?
As close as it can really get without either damaging my tree or rolling over my septic tank. Yes.
Okay, so how, how many feet is your backyard from?
It's approximately four.
So from your home to your rear property line, how many feet exist?
Four feet.
Really? All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Morton, I'm trying, your question is from where the shed is to the rear of the property line, correct?
Well, my, my question is, in terms of this house.
Right.
The house, the back of your house, how many feet from your house to the rear property line?
Four feet.
Really?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no room for a shed in your backyard?
Correct.
All right, so let me ask this though. So you stayed, just stated that to move the shed back, you would go over your septic tank?
So if I were to move it back any further on the side of the, so I had dimensions from the shed property callout box is right over my Japanese maple specimen tree that you can't see, um, on this sketch because of the callout box. But, um, there, there is a very nice tree there that, it's a really old, large Japanese maple. And I don't even know if you can get the shed around to the left side and the right side is where my septic tank is. Um, also, if you'll notice, my lot, the lot line is not straight back or in line with my house. It, you go to the top and you'll see it jogs back towards my house the further back it goes. So if I put it any further back, the further back I go, the more into my yard that the shed will sit. If that makes any sense, to have the three foot offset.
So.
I don't see anywhere else that would be better to satisfy the, the way the law is written, aside from actually having at least most of it in the quote unquote rear yard or having it behind the house. And I can't have most of it in the rear yard with the three foot offset. I can have one eighth of it approximately.
Okay. But why would you not have, uh, you know, my concern is this, you've put a shed that you've already stated you're going to put fertilizer, gasoline and all that. You know, right on an area right abutting a house, and of all places, Island Park, where why didn't you, you know, if, if anything, why didn't you just put it close to your house? Why didn't you move it as far back as you absolutely could? But instead, in my opinion, and from what I've seen visiting the site, it's like right smack in the middle. And to me, it's sort of like, this is kind of where I want it because it's most appealing to me. Um, and I'm not taking into consideration, uh, neighbors or anything like that.
Well, I have so, I have several comments there. I originally, the shed when I was first installed was actually facing the street. And I intended on maybe paving up to the shed like lots of people do with carports in Island Park, you know, a nice visual end to a driveway. And I'll also note that I con, I talked to every single neighbor that could see the shed about where I wanted to put the shed. And all were responsive except for one. And we left a note and we knocked on the door and, uh, we just didn't get a response. And, um, I don't know, I tried to do the neighborly thing, so. I don't know how to, I mean, it's, you know, it's part of a overall larger picture and I wanted to, I wanted a fence at one point to go across, to connect the house and the shed. I have small children, I wanted a sort of a backyard that I could fence in myself. But, um, you know, to, to move the shed the first time, the joists don't run the right way for the forklift to pick it up entirely. So I had to swing it around in one corner. So now it faces my house. It has to be crooked because the lot line's crooked, so it already kind of looks ridiculous. And, um, honestly, I, I just don't really want to pay to move it again. And I kind of like it where it is now. That's just kind of where I, I stand and it's been there for a while now.
Okay, all right, thank you. I have one, Mr. Palkis, do you have any questions on this one? Are you muted, Kathy?
I do. I'm stuck on, maybe I'm just missing something and maybe I, you could explain it to me. You got permission to put the shed where it is now? So you put it there and then later you had to, I don't understand that whole thing.
I, I put it in a place that did not meet order. It's, originally it was, the 10 foot across was facing the street. Um, and then I, the building inspector said, you know, that can't go there. And he, and I said, well, what if I had, you know, I can't put it in my rear yard and I can't put it behind my house. So what if I put it behind my house? Is that close enough? And he said, that sounds like a good idea to me. So I swung it around to be behind the front facade of my house. And, um, I, yes, I was given permission to place it where it is now placed. I think there were further complaints after that and then my permission was revoked, but the shed is there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, just, just to clarify, there was a complaint that was made after, after the shed was placed there and that's what prompted the letter revoking the building permit.
Okay, got it. Did you hear that, Kathy?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ms. Horowitz, do you have anything?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay, Mr. Repose, you weren't back in time, so you're kind of the alternate on this one.
All right, that's fine. I, uh, can I ask a question though?
Oh, absolutely.
So is it, is it within the side guard setback or is it not?
I'm sorry, say that.
Is it within the side guard setback or is it not?
Oh, it's not.
So.
That's the variance he seeks right now is he needs a side guard variance.
So is that the neighbor that you didn't hear or get an approval from?
I'm assuming so. There's a number of, I've got a, a number of people I know are going to speak on this and a letter from an attorney as well, so.
Yeah, I'm just thinking it's, it's pretty, I drove down the street, it's pretty close to the neighbor's house. You know, I, I don't think it's the neighborly thing to stick it right there. You know, I think there's plenty of other places to put it. And I've seen them take sheds out of places in Compton Point and Island Park that are tighter than this and they put them in the back. So I don't think it's a reasonable excuse to say we don't want to move it. I think you already know from the start that you're outside of the setback. So you're going to, you know, it's not really acceptable to, you know, it's not compliant in any facet.
It was though.
But it's clearly not.
Okay.
It's not, it's not, it's, it's, it's not, it's with, in the side yard setback, which means it's not compliant with the side yard, which is a whole separate issue of even being compliant in the backyard.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Wadde, do you have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, this has been, I asked a question.
Hang on, Ben, I'm Mr. Wadde, who was.
No questions at this time.
All right, Mr. Furell?
Um, 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 just to clarify, the question Mr. Repose brought up, is the shed, when, when, when you say it's not within the setback, does that mean it's closer than three feet to the property line?
Yes.
No. It's like four feet or five feet from the property line. It never casts any shadow on any of the windows.
It's a regulatory variance he's asking for, and to allow a shed to be put on its side yard versus his rear yard.
Yeah, so, so, so the violation or the, 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 the thing that's not being complied with, it's not in his backyard.
Correct. It's not in the owner's property, correct?
Right, but where the, where it's currently sitting, it's more than three feet for, for, from the side for, so, so, so if the shed was in his backyard, three feet from the, from the property line, this would be okay?
Yeah.
And, and, and so currently it's in his side yard, four or five feet from the property line.
So Mike Scholz is the town planner. It would have to comply with the ordinance, it would have to be completely in the rear yard. And in this case, because the rear yard is only four feet, it, it wouldn't comply. It, it, there's no possible way it could comply. Because it's wider than a foot.
Correct, I agree, right.
Okay, I understand. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, uh, Mr. Smith, is there anything else you'd like to add before I open it up to abutters or interested parties?
I don't think so. I've just, I've spent a lot of money on this. I've been to court in just ages, five times, paid a building permit, I've paid the application fee for the zoning board. It just, I don't, again, I, I asked, I tried to talk to everybody, everyone else chatted with me, one neighbor didn't. I don't know, it's kind of a shame that that's still how things work, right?
Okay, thank you. Let me open it up to abutters or interested parties.
There are two, we have Mike Saro.
Okay. So let's hear from Mr. Saro.
Um, good evening. Um, my name is John Eric. Um, I am using Mike's name at the moment, but my name is John Eric.
Could you have your full name and address for the record?
Yes, sir. John Eric six zero four Boyd's Lane.
I'm sorry, what was that again? Six oh four?
Boyd's Lane.
Okay, thank you.
Um, just an interested party, just hearing the conversation that's at hand. Um, my question would be, um, if, if I heard this correctly, did the building permit get initially approved? And, uh, if so, uh, why did the building department approve it without, uh, plans or locations submitted? That's my question.
And we cannot answer that question because we are not the building department.
I, I.
Mr. Scholomay?
It, it was, it was approved in error. There was a, there was, uh, a misinterpretation of the zoning ordinance by Assistant Building official and the Assistant Town Planner, zoning administrator. And that's why the, the permit was originally approved. It was when, when an abutter challenged the, um, the approval, the building permit approval. And, um, and that's, that's where we are.
Uh, understandable. Um, as a, you know, citizen of Portsmouth myself, I, uh, I would say that that clerical error on part of the, uh, building department is causing a direct hardship on, I believe it was Mr. Smith. And that's, that's all I have to say and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, next appears to be, um, I'm there, Mr. Thayer. Mr. Thayer, can anybody hear me? Yes, we can.
Oh, I'm, I'm not sure how to, uh, un, um, turn off my video here, turn on my video, but I don't think I will necessarily need it. Um, so I had submitted an objection memorandum. Um, I represent, uh, the Edwards family. Dorothy Edwards, um, passed away. She was the abutter. Um, Mr. Chairman Knott has described the property, which I believe is immediately to the west of this, which the shed abuts. Uh, that was, uh, Ms. Edwards' property. Allison San Filippo is Ms. Edwards' granddaughter, who for disclosure is a paralegal in my firm, who was actually under contract to buy that property, uh, from her family, from the estate. Um, and we had submitted an objection memorandum here, which I would like, like to go through very briefly. Uh, but at the outset, we would like to say that we, Ms. San Filippo nor her family harbors any will, the will against Mr. Smith. We certainly understand that the municipal process here is confusing and sometimes counterintuitive. And so, uh, hopefully he doesn't take this personally and that there won't be any ill will, that the Ms. San Filippo and her family are not opposed to a, a shed in general, but actually just specifically its location. So, um, you know, I would, I would contrast this case against one I recently had here in Portsmouth with Bill Sales Firewood, where they requested a variance. Part of the variance procedure here is kind of a balancing of the equities where they're looking at the harm to the petitioner if the variance is not granted versus the harm to abutters and maybe the town landlord is granted and whether or not we're dealing with the least amount of relief necessary and a self-created hardship. Here, the petitioner has already admitted that this is a self-created hardship. He installed landscaping in the rear of his property and now does not wish to disrupt that and would rather have the, um, the shed in the side property. So right there, he's already admitted that this is a self-created hardship. And as you can see from his drawings, the location of the shed can, oh, I certainly am sympathetic to the fact that he does not want you to move it at all. And I, I am very sympathetic if something was approved in error. The fact that he does not want to, let's, let's say move it another 10 feet to the rear, uh, is, is not somewhat disqualifying for the variance. Um, the actual text of the, the zoning ordinance on point here says that the hardship suffered by the owner must amount to more than a mere inconvenience. Well, I would argue that a few hundred dollars to move a shed to a different part of the property is a mere inconvenience. Um, and, and the, the section on point goes on to say, the fact that a use may be more profitable or more value after the relief is granted shall be not be grounds for relief. So the fact that maybe disrupting some of the landscaping in the rear might be a, a better financial position for Mr. Smith, again, is not a reason to grant the variance here. You know, the, uh, the specifically subsection, uh, D five B in the, in the variance procedures, you can see right here, my number three on the, on the page, it's on the screen here. Oh, I, I apologize, my number two, uh, the hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant. Well, I, I agree that it is not necessarily his fault that they have been told where to get paid. However, the fact that he has landscaped the rear portion of the yard and now no longer wants to disturb that would certainly be a prior action. Uh, my number three, uh, the variance would not alter the character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance. There is not really any, um, additional language in that section. However, another section of the ordinance discusses just, um, dimensional variances in general, and it provides guidance, which I have listed as A through E there, for what the board should consider when determining whether or not to grant these. And specifically, I would direct you to A, B, and C. A would allow adequate space for fire protection. Well, as Chairman Knott has already articulated, this is extremely close to another dwelling unit. In fact, abuts the kitchen and the bedroom of that other dwelling, which obviously would cause, uh, concerns for fire, um, and, and safety rescue in that area. B provides adequate light and air between the buildings. Well, if I could ask the moderator to, to scroll down to the photos that we have taken, you can see that the shed itself actually blocks the easterly sun from entering into the kitchen and bedroom of this residence, uh, which, you know, is, you know, 50% of the daily sun, as you can see right there, that's from the kitchen window. And the next photo would be from the, uh, the primary bedroom window. Again, so now this, this property is now looking out directly into that as opposed to getting sunlight in. Um, which, which, which would also comment towards numbers, uh, letter C on my number three. And, and finally, obviously, E provides a detriment to, to the neighbor. And if I could go, again, I don't want to take up much more time because I know this, this hearing has come up before a while here. But, uh, number four, um, if you just scroll down just a tiny bit there, thank you. Um, it is the most important part, I think, here that, and again, Chairman Knott and I believe Council, uh, or member Repose has commented on, is least relief necessary. Um, I believe as we have seen here, the, there is ample other room on this property. I know it's a funky layout. I know there's a very small rear yard, but to then say, oh, the petitioner gets to put the, the shed wherever he likes, which I think we can all agree is basically the middle of the property, immediately abutting my client's property and blocking light from the two primary dwelling rooms of the home, does not seem to be the least relief necessary. And as a result, is basically, you know, in complete, uh, fully contrary to the entire intent of, uh, of the variance in general. So again, my client is not against a shed in general. of, uh, of the variance in general. So again, my client is not against a shed in general. She's not trying to cause animosity here between neighbors. However, it seems as though, uh, the placement of the shed is, is, and the, and the moving of it would, would just be a mere nuisance, a mere inconvenience. And we're kind of talking about a zero sum game here. The placement of the shed as it is, um, presumably would improve the property value of the petitioner's property, as is noted by the fact that it's included in the, um, the assessment, while therefore theoretically and consequentially devaluing my, my client's property by number one, creating the possibility of the fire hazard and also from the blocking light. So, uh, for those reasons, we would, we would oppose the granting of the, of the petition, please.
Mr. Chair, go ahead. Mr. Gordon, Vice Chairman has a question. How tall is the shed?
That, uh, that I specifically do not know.
Well, I mean, guess, uh, 10 feet, 12 feet?
Well, if you, if you scroll, if you scroll down to my photos, if we could just go a little bit further down, you can see it lined up against, against, can we go, uh, to the very first photo of my exhibit A? You can see it lined up against the, the windows of the house. So you can see the roof of the shed is basically almost flush with the top of the window of a first floor dwelling.
Okay, so, so my next question is, is there a fence between the two properties?
No, there is not.
Okay. So could your petitioner put up a fence if they wanted to?
I don't see why they, why they would, but I would argue that the ability of my client to put up a fence is, does not have bearing on the, uh, placement of the shed of, of the neighbor. It would be asking my client to incur a financial, uh, you know, uh, burden here for the benefit of the neighbor.
Well, my next question is in regards to your statement about gasoline and hazardous chemicals. I don't know of a shed in Portsmouth that doesn't have gasoline and lawn mowers in it. So I don't see the danger of, uh, combustibles in a shed.
What, to, to, to somewhat debate your point here, the, the, the burden here is on the petitioner, not on the, um, client. The burden here is on the petitioner to prove X, Y, and Z, which would include this amounts to more than a mere inconvenience. This was not due to any prior acts on his behalf, and it's the least amount of relief necessary. So whether or not he's storing, you know, stuffed animals or he's storing, uh, gasoline in there does not necessarily have a bearing on his burden of proving those two things, which I think he has failed to prove.
I'm all set. Okay. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Thayer?
That is it, unless there's any further questions for me.
Um, I don't see any. Thank you, Mrs. Thayer.
Thank you.
All right. Who else? Um, George, George Peterson. George Peterson. Go ahead, go on, uh, Mr. Peterson.
This is, um, Allison San Filippo. I'm Adam Thayer's client. I just wanted to point out very quickly.
Hang on, Allison, hang on a second. Okay. Your coming through is George Peterson.
Right. George Peterson is my boyfriend. He is buying the property with me.
Okay. So for the record, your full name and address, please.
Um, Allison San Filippo, currently at 50 Lawton Avenue, Tiverton, Rhode Island, soon to be 25 Cove Street, Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
Okay, Ms. San Filippo, go ahead.
I just wanted to quickly say that there is a small fence in between there. It's just a small, like, what we,
Two pole fence.
Two pole fence, uh, wooden fence. So that is to be taken into consideration as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Nope, that's it.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? No? All righty. I do have a couple of letters in the file, um, that I will read. Let's see. So Mr. Thayer has already spoken. So. All right. So I do have a letter from a Wayne Oldroy, 460 Park Avenue, Portsmouth, to whom it may concern. The Smith family, Mark, Rebecca, and sons of Cove Street, Portsmouth, Rhode Island. Have been my neighbors for approximately four years. The Smiths have been an asset to the neighborhood and town Portsmouth. They're friendly, family that are into conscientious love to parents of their home and property. Very fortunate, I have a Smith family and other young families in the neighborhood. I may be contacted following Mr. Wayne Oldroy, 460 Park Avenue, Portsmouth, Rhode Island. Uh, next letter is, uh, to whom it may concern. My family and I have known the Smith family since they moved into 23 Cove Street before the house was purchased and renovated. It was a dilapidated structure like some houses around Island Park. It was an eyesore. I never heard anyone or knew anyone complain about it. Since its renovation, the upkeep of the Smith family property is beautiful. The Smith family purchased the shed so they can store kids' toys, gadgets, and other outdoor items. From my understanding, they have to appear in court because of the location of the shed. The ordinance states that it cannot be in the front yard. It also states it has to be three feet away from the line of the rear and side yard. The location of the house makes it very difficult to place the shed to the rear of the house. The Smith family does not have a backyard like most properties do in Island Park. Location where Mark and Rebecca would like to place the shed does not bother us. Signed Seth and Julian Chiaro, 14 Cove Street, Portsmouth, Rhode Island. And the last one is, uh, dear members of the zoning board, I have been a neighbor of Mark and Rebecca since 2017. I live at, and again, this is handwritten, so bear with me. I cannot make out the number. Cove Street, I am writing to you in support of their shed placement in that 23 Cove Street. It's a beautiful shed and doesn't affect the neighborhood in any, any negative way. There's also a beautiful flower box to admire. That shed is a great way to keep their yard nice and tidy as well as their children's toys say. It's a beautiful shed for a beautiful family with a beautiful yard. Please consider this letter when deciding how to proceed with the variance request. Thank you so much for your time. Sincerely, Kristin North. And that is all the information I have on this. So is there anyone else, Mike, that has come forward to speak?
Yeah, there's one hand up. Um, it says Cindy Edwards.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Edwards, are you on?
I'm on.
All right. Uh, full name and address, please.
Um, Cindy Edwards. I'm at 48 Hope, Tiverton, Rhode Island.
Okay, go ahead.
The point I wanted to make was getting back to this shed that's in the middle of that yard. There's plenty of room in the back of that yard to put the shed. They put that garden in after the fact. Uh, after they had put the shed there. The garden hadn't been there and it's, it's no shakes of a garden either. But my point is, in the shed, they're, they're saying themselves, they can, they could be storing chemicals in there, lawn chemicals, fertilizer, gasoline, all of which the fumes from these things, since that is so close to my mother's house, the fumes can go right in the windows there. It's, it's incredibly close to the house. I think it's dangerous.
Okay. Is there anything else?
Pretty much it.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? No. All right. Seeing there's no one else, Mark Smith is before the board. Text says it's map 20 lot 357. Seeking.
There's one, one hand that just went up. Sorry. Um, it says Steve.
Okay. All right. Uh, we have a Steve on?
Yes.
Okay. Can I have your full name and address, please?
Yes. First name is Steven. Last name is Papas. Address is 8846 Southern Charm Circle. That's in Brooksville, Florida.
Okay, Mr. Papas, go ahead.
Well, I don't want to be a lecturer, so I'm going to try to make this fairly brief. But as a former member of the zoning board, when I heard about this petition, to me, this is a slam dunk. Least relief required. There is plenty of room to put the shed in another spot. I hate to be, uh, sounding negative to a neighbor, somebody who's friends to the family. But when the zoning board looks at an item like this, they grant relief, the least relief required. This shed can be moved to the rear of the property. There is no doubt about it. The septic tank is nowhere near the shed. So those are my comments. I'm hoping that the board sees as I do that you have a shed that is approximately three foot from a side yard when it should be in a rear yard. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Papas. Is that all?
Okay. Going once, going twice.
That's it. We are now moving forward with the vote. As I stated earlier, Mark Smith of 23 Cove Street, Texas, says it's map 20 lot 357, seeking a regulatory variance for the purpose of placing his shed on the side yard of his property approximately four feet from the property line. Mr. Gordon. Mister Chairman, this is a very difficult decision. Mr. Smith has complied with every element of the process to construct and place his shed in the property. He contacted the building inspector. He, um, seeked advice from the assistant planner, and because errors of the town, he was told he could legally place his shed on his side yard location it's currently placed. Now, because of a complaint, he's told he has to move it. So I have conflicting feelings. And as a member of the zoning board, uh, unfortunately for Mr. Smith, I'm obligated to comply with the ordinance, which states that the least relief necessary and whether or not he can move it to the backyard, even though his backyard is only four feet, which further complicates the issue. And for Mr. Smith to spend $600 after he was told by the town that he could place it there, in my opinion, is not fair. However, I, I have to comply with the zoning ordinance and I wish there was a way to somehow compensate Mr. Smith. But I have to vote deny because um, it's not the least relief necessary, even though he was misled by the town of Portsmouth. And I apologize for the town of Portsmouth for that. So I vote deny. Thank you, Mr. Purell.
Mister Chairman, I agree with Mr. Bor that this is a difficult situation. I vote to approve the variance. Uh, Mr. Smith cannot comply however much he would like to comply with the letter of the ver, of the regulation because he has insufficient backyard. Um, uh, given that he has to place this somewhere, then placing it, um, um, through no action of his own, in fact, through an action by the town, he placed it where he thought in good faith it was okay. And therefore I think that that constitutes, um, um, a, a attempt to, 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 to make this the re, the least relief necessary. And therefore I vote to approve.
And who's called Marcus?
I wholeheartedly concur with Mr. Furio. I think this is, um, very unfair to Mr. Smith that, um, he has, he has to bear the burden of this when he was given permission. Um, so I vote to approve.
Thank you. Ms. Horowitz?
I actually voted not to approve based on Mr. Gordon's, um, comments. My, my concern is for the neighbor. I mean, they're literally looking into the face of the shade and I think that really affects the quality of their life.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Horowitz. My vote is a moot point at this, uh, because it only takes two denials to lose its not. But the chairman's vote would be to deny as well. And as with Mr. Gordon, I was next. So Mr. Thayer brought up an, um, an interesting point that if this were a substandard lot of record, uh, which there are many in Island Park, almost all of them, this one is not. But there is criteria for that, that this would not pass the special use criteria. Okay. But one would say, okay, then why are you talking about it? Well, it's very simple. The lot really doesn't conform anyway because of where the house is placed. So, you know, you can't put the shed in that because the house isn't conforming to the ordinance either. So I then said, okay, what is most important here? And the most important thing, in my opinion, is safety first. And I have concerns with gasoline, fertilizer, but more importantly, gasoline and the like in a shed that's very close to a home. And that shed, in my opinion, could be moved further back in the lot to mitigate a lot of that. That, along with just a simple drive up the road, and there's many houses similar to Mr. Smith's that are way in the back. They really don't have a backyard, but in most cases, everyone has put their sheds in the rear of their property, just as the ordinance sort of intends. So, uh, that being said, I'm erring on, on the side of safety in this. Um, I don't think to deny amounts to more than a mere inconvenience. I think to approve becomes an inconvenience and also a safety issue to be abutting property. So uh, my vote is to deny as well. So petition has been denied. Thank you. Okay. That's a tough one. Yes, it was. Very difficult, but that's why we're here. Okay. The next item on the agenda is a Michael and Karen Mulligan, 58 Millway, Texas, says it's map 51 lot 238. And trying to see exactly what they're seeking because I see. Mr. Schol, anyone else on this? I see no variance requests.
It's, uh, it's, uh, it's a side yard. It's another, um, shed in a side yard.
Could you kind of point that out to me? Because I don't see it anywhere on this. Lot covers, I've covered this line. I see no variance. I don't see.
So, uh, it's a corner lot.
Right. So they're seeking a same, same, so it's a corner lot, they're seeking a regulatory variance for a shed outside.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Let me see if I can get to property. So it's 5138. The shed is located, I think it's actually kind of like anywhere these trees, kind of screened by the trees.
I think I got, I don't, I don't, I don't really see it. Oh shit. Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right. So Michael and Karen Mulligan is before the board, Texas, says it's map 51 lot 288. Seeking a regulatory variance, place a shed on the side of their property. They are on a corner lot. Are the Mulligans on?
Uh, yep. Sorry. All right, Mike, can you unmute? Hey, Mike, Mike Mulligan, can you unmute? That's true.
Hey, Mike Mulligan, can you unmute?
Mr. Mulligan's on it. Can't get him to unmute his...
Can you hear me?
Ah, now we can hear you, Mr. Mulligan. Thank you.
Okay.
Hang on a second, Mr. Mulligan. So hearing this petition will be Mr. Borden, Mr. Fierl, Mr. Papas, Mr. Repose, myself. And Ms. Horwitz will be the alternate. All right. Mr. Mulligan, can you raise your right hand and you swear to tell the truth? Mr. Mulligan, we're having difficulty hearing you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Okay, Mr. Mulligan, raise your right hand.
Okay.
Swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Can we have your full name and address, Boba, please?
Michael Dennis Mulligan, 58 Mill Lane, Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
Okay, Mr. Mulligan, you want to tell us what you'd like to do? I understand you're for regulatory variance to put a shed on your side property you're on a corner lot.
Yes, this corner lot, because we originally built the house, we were Vieira Road. But a few years later, the fire department had asked us to take Mill Lane for safety purposes, because Vieira Road at the time was a paper road that was not going to be sanctioned. Well, since then, it has been sanctioned. Which was my original address.
Mr. Mulligan, I need to tell you about, we're having a buffering problem on your end. Came through very broken up. And you seem to be muted again. Mr. Mulligan, maybe what I could ask you to do is to, you can leave your video on, but to call in. And I can give you that number. So the number is 888-788-0099. Once prompted for the meeting ID, dial 810...
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, you were very buffered. It was very broken up. Mr. Mulligan, again, I'm going to repeat, I think the best at this stage is for you to dial in via telephone. And again, that number would be 888-788-0099. BDID number 810-7212 or 202 pound. And once prompted for a petition by ID, you won't need to do that. So if you just dial in on that, then we'll be able to hear you because your audio through
Continue his until they call in?
Yeah, the next one.
Would you say it by email?
Good for you, Mike. You have to do the next one, by the way. There's no way we're going to get to...
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Yeah, we have you now, Mr. Mulligan. You're very...
Okay.
Okay. Want to try it again? It's not working.
Yeah.
We, next...
Mr. Mulligan, it's not working. The connection on your end is not coming through.
Yeah, you're in and out, though.
Yeah, that's on your end, Mr. Mulligan. So that's why I recommended that you dial in on the dial in number. Can you see the screen?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, but it's coming in and out, Mr. Mulligan. It's period.
Yeah. All right, I'll get the paper and I'll dial in then.
I don't know what to do at this point. Oh, is Mr. Mulligan? Is he calling in is the question?
Yeah, they don't have a number yet. Yeah, actually, he might be able to, if he turned off his video and just used the audio, if there might be enough bandwidth.
Yeah. Mr. Mulligan, are you there? I think what we might want to do is table this for now and go to Donovan Gray. I don't have his whole number.
No, I just sent the email, the screenshot of the...
Mr. Chairman, this is Fierl.
Yes?
May I move to defer the Mulligan application to our next scheduled meeting?
We could do that. Oh, we could play defer to after Donovan Gray, the very next one, in case we can get, in case he can get his connection. We'll just defer to after the next one and we'll see where we're at with that. Yes.
Sir, even better than mine. I withdraw my...
Okay. All right. So what we will do is we're going to defer, and I don't know if Mr. Mulligan can hear me, but we are going to defer him till after the next petition, see if he comes back. For the record, just for everybody that's on, it is 9:20. We only need till 10:00. I would highly doubt we're going to get to the petition of John J. and Helena Massler, Michael and Larian Sorrow, Newport Electric and Bonnie Hall, and Matt Chase. I highly doubt we'll get to those tonight. We'll do the best we can. Same with Elizabeth's chair. It depends how long Donovan Gray and Mr. Mulligan's go. But I just wanted to give everybody a heads up on that. So the next petition is a petition by Donovan Gray, Texas, that's his map 28 lot 17. Because the chairman has a conflict with this, the chairman's going to recuse himself. Turn the chair over.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, Mr. Mulligan, are you there?
Yes, I am.
All right. We deferred you. If you could just hang on, we're going to hear this next petition. And then we're going to come back to you because we couldn't wait much longer, okay?
That's fine.
All right. All right. So Mr. Borden has taken the chair. I'm stepping down. Is there someone representing Donovan Gray?
Hello, yes, this is Matthew Gray of Donovan Gray Distribution. I am resident of Portsmouth at 87 Colonel Christopher Green Road, as well as the property owner at 54 Bristol Ferry Road, where this application...
Okay. Could you raise your right hand and swear to tell the truth?
Swear to tell the truth.
Yes, thank you. So you've received a couple of zoning board special use permits. Tell us what you'd like to do in regards to the alteration from your previously approved permits.
Certainly. Thank you. Currently, we've been approved for the building of a microbrewery here on the farm as part of a special use variance with the town for brewing the beer on agricultural property. And then we've also been approved, I think it actually was late July, for a special use agricultural permit to host a series of beer garden events at the property where the brewery will move to in light of the COVID-19 situation. Gave us a place to do this in an outdoor setting with space, whereas our current taproom is not configured for that. So tonight, we're coming to the board and asking for an extension of that special use permit from August and September into the month of October as well. We didn't ask for that initially because we did want to make sure that our neighbors had a chance to see what we were doing, what our operation would be like, and have a chance to, you know, speak up about that if we were to seek further use. With the month of October coming up, we understand the temperature is getting colder. Being outside is going to be harder and harder for small businesses like ours. But we would like the opportunity to host and continue to host our events outside on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. That is an addition of Thursday service hours. Friday, Saturday, and Sunday were a part of the pre-approved permit. And as we have done so far, we would not stay open until later than 8:00 PM. But we'd just like a little bit of flexibility due to the change in sunrise as the season continues to go. So we may not say open until 8:00, but we'd like to be able to shift some of those hours of operations a little earlier in our day, if possible.
Oh, my question is, in regards to all the criteria that you were initially approved for, has anything changed in regards to your request to extend through October?
Nothing has changed.
All right. Thank you very much. Do you have anything else to add?
Just that we're hopeful that by November, we'll be actually doing construction work out here. And if that's the case, getting through the month of October would be very helpful for our business, both mine and McGrath Clambakes. It has been beneficial to be open. And, you know, we've really had a good time having people come out to the farm and kind of share in the vision that maybe some of you on the zoning board have seen for a couple of years, but they hadn't been able to experience firsthand. And it's all pretty much, I think, 100% positive feedback. So we're very pleased with that and hopeful for the future.
Thank you. Are there butters or interested parties? Let me, I need to check the file and see if there are any letters.
Yeah, there were none.
There was none? Okay.
We do have a Megan Kessel.
Hi, this is Megan Cassell. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you state your name and address for the record and you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, my name is Megan Cassell. I'm speaking on behalf of Noreen and Richard Cassell, who are at 24 Bristol Ferry Road in Portsmouth.
Okay, proceed.
So there have been just a couple of things that changed, and I have a couple of questions for Matt and the brewery. The petition itself for requesting the extension is a little bit vague. It does say that they would like to add Thursday to the hours. It also says we'd like the flexibility to start earlier and end earlier than the approved hours, but he doesn't actually specify what hours. One of the things I'm also concerned about is that in July, when the special use permit was approved, it was stated that there weren't going to be any lights, that the plans themselves are approved to have bollard lights, which are ground level. Right now, there are strung lights. There's a couple of times, more than a couple of times, where the lights have been on all night, but you can actually see them from the bedroom windows. I got to my parents' house at 11:30 at night on Friday, and the lights were still on on Saturday. I mean, ending at 8:00, in my mind, and I'd like to know what the zoning board's views are on this, if you say that you're not going to operate later than 8:00, we took that to mean that people would be told at 8:00 to leave, not last call at 8:00 and not leave until 9:00, which is actually what we're seeing happening on Fridays and Saturdays. So we're not objecting to Thursday being included, but I would like to just make sure that the original intent of the special use permit is actually being adhered to. The strung lights are different than what was approved. That's not necessarily a problem, but they have to be shut off at 8:00, because that's what time you're saying you're finished, not later. And the fact that you've got cars that are staying there past 8:00 means that at 9:00, you've got my parents' backyard is being lit up with headlights, which could be alleviated with some shrubbery or something of that nature. So that was just our concerns. Their lighting is staying, first of all, there is lighting, it's staying on too late. The hours are staying a little bit longer, and there was just a lack of specificity. So if those things could be clarified, we wouldn't have any objection.
Can you respond?
Sure. First and foremost, I've closed every single shift of this series. I work every Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and we've turned the lights off every time when we're done, when we've left the property.
Matt, I'll send you pictures next time.
Thanks, Megan. We are, nobody contacted us about any light issues either until two minutes ago. We've also, our permit allows for us to have service until 8:00. That's what we do. People are to finish their beverage and leave our property in a timely fashion, which they always do. We don't rush them out of here, we don't kick them out. We don't think that would be very friendly as a customer. And we're still in the process of closing down from the events. So we have staff members that are still here, whether they're cleaning the tables or cleaning up after our guests, or breaking down the bar, which we have to do every night because we can't leave alcohol outside. You know, we do have some work that we must do to finish up from the special event. And all of that would be permitted in the future. Our hours are actually till 9:00 PM in the current application that was approved. Our hours of operation will be noon to 9:00 every day. So I don't see where the challenge is there. And as far as the lighting goes, there certainly wasn't a, you know, field lighting plan in the first one, because we didn't have a field lighting plan. We had to see what it was like once we had folks out here. Turns out, they'd rather be out in the field than under the tent. And so we've put up a few string lights that we hang, you know, like any resident can do in their areas, you know, and that light is on until we can turn it off.
Okay, Matt, I really do need to respond to this because I, first, I don't see, when this permit was approved in July, it says the hours of operation are 3:00 to 8:00. In your letter of 9-1, it states we would not operate later than 8:00 PM. You... You and I seem to have different interpretations of what it means to operate after 8:00 p.m. Because I've got friends who are bar owners near me. We've got a, they've got a shut-down patio at 10:00 o'clock. That doesn't mean finish your, like, order your last drink at 10:00. That means gotta be out off of that area because of the neighbors. Your, you are, those lights are being kept up. I think this notion that things are being kept on much later than that is really stretching what the actual permit said. And in July, Mr. Farrell specifically asked you if there would be lights. I even raised the point that, like, on October 1st, sunset is at 6:45. You specifically said no lights. It was fairly obvious that this was gonna be an issue if you were gonna stay open until 8:00, so we really think that you're pushing the bounds of this as much as you can. And we don't have a problem with this as long as you're adhering to. I don't know where you got, where is this 9:00, where is this noon to 9:00 request?
The permit for our full functioning brewery, we are allowed to operate between noon and 9:00 every single day of the week.
The special use permit approved in July says 3:00 to 8:00 on Friday.
No, the original permit that has been approved two times over now, which was approved back in 2019, and then again earlier this year by the zoning board for our fully operational brewery, which I believe Mr. Boardman used as the reason why this would be an allowable use because it's already been pre-approved for what we're trying to do.
So you're.
I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just letting you know that we have a noon to 9:00 o'clock proposal because Mr. Boardman is very specific about that because we didn't want to serve customers after 9:00 o'clock at night.
You have, you have a special use permit, you have a special use permit that was approved in July and in August that says 3:00 to 8:00. I recognize that.
Right now, we're asking for more flexible hours with that.
Excuse me. I recognize that if you had.
Hold on, can I say something? This used to be one party states their question.
I would like you both to stop this back and forth right now. I would just like to ask our assistant zoning official to weigh in in regards to when the request was approved for in terms of hours. Is it 8:00 p.m. or 9:00 p.m.?
What was approved, special use permits, was Fridays and Saturdays, 3:00 to 8:00 p.m. And 1:00 to 6:00 on Sunday.
Okay, so, based on the decision, it was approved for 3:00 to 8:00 p.m. So.
And that's the hours we've operated in.
To be no more activity, no more lights, no more drinks, no more activity. So, that was what was approved. Unless you'd like to amend that request, that was what was approved by the board.
And we believe that we're doing that right now. I know that Megan does not believe that.
You actually just mentioned 9:00 p.m. or the butter.
No, 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 we are not asking for 9:00 p.m. for now. What we're saying is that we have been approved to operate until 9:00 p.m.
Well, whoa, excuse me. The decision was 8:00 p.m., not 9:00 p.m. Where are you getting the 9:00 p.m. from?
All I'm suggesting is that we have already been approved for when the brewery is fully open and operational here, that our hours of operation will be until 9:00 p.m.
No, that was the original request.
Correct, and that's what I was talking about before when I was indicating.
The assistant.
Yeah, just to clarify, Matt's referring to the special use permit for the group, the farm group.
Itself.
Which, yeah, which is a separate application and is not, is not in service right now because it hasn't.
Right, so. Correct, so your farm brewery is off the table right now, so.
Well, I'm not arguing either, sir, that, I'm not trying to argue for 9:00 o'clock service hours. That's not what I'm arguing for. What I'm arguing is that we are currently operating within the hours that we are relegated to operate in.
Which is 8:00 p.m., not 9:00 p.m.
Correct, we have never operated past 8:00 p.m. here.
Okay, so, I guess, to the butters' point, 8:00 p.m. is 8:00 p.m. and not stretching out till 9:00 p.m. with lights and finishing up service and so forth, that headlights are via butters' property.
We, we have guests here, and we serve them up until the hours that we're allowed to, within reason. 8:00 is the hour of our operations, our operations cease at 7:50. No other sales are happening, no other commercial activity is happening at that point in time. We are effectively closed, we are breaking down. We are leaving our property at that time. If it takes us 45 minutes to exit the entire property because we're doing all these things to break down and leave, that is not the operations of the special event. That is just me on my property cleaning up after myself.
So, now you're asking for Thursday in addition to Friday, Saturday, is that correct?
We are hopeful, and we think that people would come out on Thursday too to support our business, and that's what we're asking for, yes.
Okay. All right. So, essentially, this is a special use permit request to amend the previously approved petition. Are there any zoning board members that would like to comment?
Has anybody complained, or is there any other complaints about noise or lights or anything? Or is it just seems to be the same neighbor with the same complaints? But I've, live on the road, and I have not seen or heard or seen excessive traffic or late-night activities. I mean, granted, I'm driving by, but I've never seen the lights left on. Not to say they weren't, but, and secondly, how bright are string lights if they're left on? I mean, is it like a 10,000-k string light we're looking at? Or is it just like to illuminate the tent, you know, not to be? This, I feel like some of this is getting a little blown out of proportion.
Thank you, Mr. Reposa.
May I respond to Mr. Reposa?
Right now, we're zoning board members, you can respond at the end of the zoning board member comments.
Thank you.
Ms. Horowitz, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay. Any other zoning board members have any questions or comments?
Yes, I do, Kathy speaking.
Yes, Kathy.
Mr. Gray, is it possible with, just hypothetically speaking, that your property could possibly become residential?
I think by right, we're, we are residential, and we could have 26 houses on this property by right.
So, if your business fails, that might happen.
It might not be me who's developing it either, it could be somebody else.
Yes, okay, just want to make that point because, you know, I've, I have a shop on Bristol Ferry Road. I've been working there at nighttime, on the weekends, going back and forth, and it seems pretty sedate at your place. I haven't noticed a lot, I haven't noise, cars, or anything. And that's all I have to say. I think your neighbors need to know that this could be something else down the road, and it's not pleasant having housing project, a housing development going up next year. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other zoning board members? Okay, that being said, butters, are there butters that wish to comment on their remarks?
Thank you, Kessel again.
Yes.
So, respectfully to the board, I realize that you're taking this as an aggravated neighbor, and that's not what it's intended to be whatsoever. As I said, we're not opposed to this. However, what we are asking is that the zoning board stick with what was approved in July, which is, "We will not operate later than 8:00 p.m." And if, if what needs to happen is we need to start sending photographs of every time the lights are kept on, you can't see these lights from, you can't see the lights from the road, and you can't see the cars from the road because the cars are parked so that they're behind my parents' house. So, look, it's not a problem, but shut off the lights. Actually, end the operations, not serving hours, the operations at 8:00. You said flat out in July that you weren't gonna have lights. Again, you can't see this from the road, but you can definitely see it from the porch, and you can see the lights from my parents' bedroom as people are leaving and they're, and I recognize that, hey, in the future, there could be a full housing project, but that's not the zoning board's issue to decide.
Thank you.
I believe even if there wasn't a permit, they could hang up as many lights as they want and leave them on as long as they want. So I don't, I don't understand the lighting thing, but.
They specifically said in the request that there would be no lighting in the request that was approved. And they did have a lighting plan that was approved for the full brewery, for bollard lights, so.
For the full brewery, but he just tried to speak to the full brewery, and he got shot down relating to the 9:00 p.m. purpose. So we're kind of going back and forth to two plans.
Well, okay, then if I could reference the, if I could reference the petition from the application in July, it very specifically states from the minutes that are attached to this file that there would be no lighting and no amplified music. The lighting is a change, it's not a problem, but it needs to be shut off.
I think I need to stop you because that petition is not in front of us to see. So, I think this board has heard enough. Are there any zoning board members that would like to ask or make any final comments before we vote? Okay, hearing none. I think we're ready to vote. Petition by Donovan Gray Distributing is requesting an amendment to the agricultural special events petition that was currently approved. They would like to extend into October and also allow Thursday evening activities. Mr. Farrell.
Mr. Chairman, I vote to approve the petition. Extending into October makes sense, given the economic situation that the COVID-19 pandemic has placed us in. I am hopeful and expectant that Mr. Gray will shut off lights and not leave them on all night long or long past the time when his staff leaves. And I think that can be monitored and taken care of. But.
Thank you. Ms. Horowitz.
I vote to approve for reasons previously stated.
Ms. Lockes.
I vote to approve for all reasons previously stated.
Is it, Mr. Reposa?
Also vote to approve for reasons previously stated. Wish him luck.
Thank you. The chairman also votes to approve. I think this is passive use. Petitioners pretty much complied with everything in regards to the ordinance. I would respectfully request that the petitioner try to shut off the lights by 8:00 p.m. I don't see it as, as Mr. Reposa pointed out, it's string lights. It's, it's not as though there's amplified music or major spotlights, but all due respect to the neighbors, my hope would be that the petitioner tries to accommodate the neighbors that comply with the 8:00 p.m. restriction that the board put in place. So, I vote to approve, and I wish the petition the best. The petition has been approved.
Thank you very much.
Okay, for the record, the chairman is back in the chair. And, let's see. Okay, so is Mr. Mulligan still here? Mulligan, you there? Mulligan, you there? Mr. Mulligan?
Here, lovely.
Okay. Let me see where we're at. Is it, yeah, here? So, that'll be the next one we hear. All right, so, it appears we lost Mr. Mulligan. Next on the agenda then, to push him off. But, it is going to be the petition of Elizabeth Shearer. So, the petitions of John J. and Helena Massa, Michael and Laurie Ansaro, Newport Electric and Bonnie Hall, Matt Chase, those petitions are gonna be carried over to our regularly scheduled meeting. I believe that is October 15th. Correct. Also, the petition of Mr. Mulligan will carry over to the 15th as well, as he's not on. So, let's at least continue with Elizabeth Shearer and Harold Connor, are you on?
Yes, I'm three, oh, there.
Yeah. Okay, is Shearer's on?
Yeah. I'll see him, where? Yeah.
Could you unmute yourself, please?
Sorry.
That's okay. So is this Elizabeth Shearer, Harold Connor?
Yes.
Okay, could you raise your right hand? When to tell the truth?
Yes, you do.
Okay, could you each individually give your full name and address for Barbara, please?
Elizabeth L. Shearer, 47 Point Road.
Harold Connor, 47 Point Road.
Okay, would you tell us what you'd like to do?
Yes, we want to put up an open carport in the front of the house.
And that's pretty much about the extent of it, correct?
That's all, yeah.
Is there presently a garage on the house?
No.
Well, you have no garage.
No, it's just an open driveway.
Right, okay. I would assume they're here because they're looking for bearings inside, correct, Mike? Carport, those is considered permanent structure?
Yeah.
Right.
It's too close to the fence to the neighbor, although the neighbor has said he has no objection. He's seen the.
Yeah, I can't, it's a change. Is there a side yard setback?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see that sheet. I don't either. Let me see if it's in the main. Don't see a setback relief sheet. When is the relief here requested? Down there. Hey, just give us a second, please.
Sure.
There's no side setback, not in the file either, Mike. Give us just a second, it's paperwork issues. Give us just a second, it's big work issues.
It's going to be a seven foot there, variance for the side yard.
All right, so for the board members, they're asking a seven foot side yard variance for the purpose of putting up those carports, or tenders required.
Ten.
And. Is there any water coverage? No, no, no water coverage, variance or anything like that. So basically, it's to put a carport so you can store your vehicles under inclement weather, correct?
Right, just keep the, from crapping on it and the snow off it.
Okay. I don't have any questions. Board, do you have any? No questions. Just, Furell, do you have any questions?
One question, the drawing, this package, it looks like in the front of the house there's a ramp. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, this is a ramp.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you very much.
When we got the variance before, we were making the house handicapped accessible for our son-in-law, who used a wheelchair. He is since deceased, but the ramp still stays, and we may need it at some point.
That's, let's hope you don't, we're very, our condolences.
Thank you.
Bob Lachas, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, I don't.
Hey, Mr. Reposa?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, I don't have any questions as well. You've provided us with a nice set of engineered drawings, so I have no concerns myself there. So let me see if there's any letters in the file or anything. I don't believe so, and I don't see anything.
We've talked to the neighbors, immediate butters on either side, and they're both fine. The only one that it really affected is the one over to the south, but, and he's looked at the plans, and he's fine.
Right, okay. On my chat, ask publicly, do we see anybody up there at all, or?
No answers.
No answers made, okay. So Elizabeth Shearer, Harold Connor, before the board protects assessors, Matt, 21 lot 102, seeking a seven foot side yard variance to construct a carport on their property. Mr. Borden. This is chairman, petitioner has a very reasonable request, the carport to protect their vehicles, it's a reasonable request to deny them up to more than American needs, so I approve the relief for a dimensional variance. Thank you. Mr. Furell?
Mr. Chairman, I vote for the reasons cited by Mr. Borden.
Thank you. Ms. Bob Lachas?
I vote to approve for reasons previously stated by Mr. Borden.
Thank you. Reposa?
I also vote to approve for reasons previously stated.
Thank you. The chairman also votes for reasons previously stated by Mr. Borden as well, so your petition has been approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have a motion to adjourn. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to adjourn. I have a second.
Second, Kathy speaking.
Thank you. All in favor of Mr. Borden? Mr. Borden, aye. Mr. Furell?
Furell, aye.
Bob Lachas?
Aye.
Horowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Reposa?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye as well, so thank you very much, folks. We'll see you in a while. Have a good night. Bye, everyone.
Aye. Good night.
Night.